Pledge of Allegiance from Isabella Mucchio from Margate Elementary. I'll let you know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. And I'd like to recognize retired Commissioner Joseph Barcelon in the audience.
Thank you for recognizing me, Madam Mayor. And I would in turn like to recognize the illustrious staff that sits on that podium and the city clerk. Let's have a nice hand for all of them.
First up is a presentation, New Technologies and Recycling Services Update Presented by Waste Management.
My name is Luigi Pace and I work with Waste Management. I'm the mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. I want to thank you for allowing us a few minutes today to bring some information to you, some changes we've done. In 2013, I'm going to try to use the clicker, and it works. Some of the topics I wanted to talk to you tonight about was some new technology we've implemented in 2013, as well as Margate's Green Footprint, some beneficial recycling impacts, and the Recycle Bank Report. I was putting this together, I said, well, let's take a look, let me take a look and see the services we provide the city. And I started compiling the information, and I want to show you some numbers that are pretty impressive. During the course of the week, we provide 40,000 services a week to the residents and the businesses in the city. So as you extrapolate that out for the year, you've got 2.1 million services or touches that we do every year. So our goal is to do these services as safely and efficiently as possible. Excuse me. So one of the things I want to give you a brief update on is how we train our drivers and how seriously we take the safety. 24 years ago, when I started in the garbage business, I was given on my first day the key store garbage truck, and I was told, drive this truck to this location by the Miami International Airport. If you make it there without hitting anybody, you're hired. Well, look, I'm standing here today, so I was fortunate enough not to hit anybody. Things have changed in 24 years, and now our training will all, and I'll just be very brief on it, a new hire comes onboard, we send them to Fort Myers, to a driver training school that we have. We don't send them to Estero Boulevard or Fort Myers Beach. It's two weeks of classroom training, plus an on-the-job training, a hands-on training with equipment, and we even have a simulator, just like our jet fighters do, we have a simulator for the garbage truck driver. If they don't pass those two weeks, they're no longer employed with Waste Management. That's how serious we take it. So the employees that do pass that two-week course, they come back to us for a $90 on-the-job training at the local district. So again, very brief summary of what we do, but as you can see, it's something we take very serious. We're always looking for ways to utilize technology to help us improve on our safety. And that's one of these items, a drive cam. And I've got actually a sample of what the drive cam looks like, a dummy unit that you can look at and touch. This unit gets mounted on the windshield of the truck. There's a camera that faces forward, and there's a camera that faces inside the cab of the truck. Now, this unit is not recording everything the driver's doing and sending it back to some central location, but what it does, it's a digital recorder, and it erases itself like every 12 seconds. So what does it do? Well, the moment there's a triggering event, now what could that be? Simple, the driver's going, he slams on the brakes too hard, or he accelerates too fast, takes a corner too fast, there's parameters that we set, the unit will capture eight seconds before the event and four seconds after. It'll upload that to a laptop, so the route manager can look at it. And we've utilized this to pinpoint unsafe driving habits, and we use that for training at the district, and we also use it to recognize safe driving habits. And to actually, you know, promote and maybe pat on the back our drivers that are utilizing all the training that we're getting to do things right. And it's very impactful because it's not a safety video where you're watching an actor in a scripted scene showing him doing all the right things. Hey, no, these are drivers that work with each other. They'll say, hey, that's John, and he did the right thing. So it's, it hits home for them. So we have this mounted in all of our trucks, and it's been a very useful training device for us. So that's just talking a little bit of what we did in 2013 to improve safety. And we'll talk a little bit of what we've done to improve efficiency providing those 2 million services a year. Again, I'll go back to, well, not ancient history, but in early 2013, we still had paper route sheets. So a driver would come in, we'd give him a route sheet, about 20 pages, and have all the commercial customers he had to service that day go out there, he'd check it off with his pen, and if there was any issues, he'd write it up. At the end of the day, come into dispatch, and we'd go ahead and input that information into our system. Well, early in 2013, we switched over to onboard computers, which I have a, it's a tablet. I think those are Samsung Galaxy tablets, and every single driver has one. Come in in the morning, they get it, their work for that day is downloaded to the tablet. They get on the truck, and the tablet allows us to have real-time service confirmation. So driver comes up to the corner restaurant, he services it, he puts it, taps the screen, we get automatic confirmation that that customer will service. So that does a couple of things for us. One, real time, so any route manager can look and know exactly the status of each of his routes out there. The other thing that it does is if there's a mechanical issue with the truck, drivers can't finish the route, we've got to make sure that all those customers are taken care of, we actually can now with a click of a mouse move all that work that hadn't been done to another driver's tablet. I used to have to run around making photocopies of the route sheets, find the kinkles or do something to get this done. Now it's just a click of a mouse. So that enables us to be a little bit more efficient. What also happens is when I give a driver a new stop, hey, I don't know how to get there. Well, the tablet has GPS turn-by-turn direction. So it helps us be efficient because we can, we can, we know when the customers are being serviced, we know what's left for the day, and it'll help us get, our drivers get to the customer if they have to service somebody new. So those are the technologies we've implemented in our trucks in 2013. Now, we've started converting our fleet from a diesel truck fleet to a compressed natural gas fleet, or CNG for short. Part of what we've done is, besides buying the trucks, we've actually invested, I want to tell you about three and a half, $4 million, in a CNG fueling station at our facility on Powerline Road. That facility is not only for waste management trucks, but it's also for third-party. Yesterday, no, it was Tuesday, AT&amp;T had one of their service vans, and CNG was there buying CNG fuel. We've also got some competitors that have some CNG trucks, and if they need fuel, they can come in, and we're just a retailer. We can sell them to CNG Fuel. So our goal is to get all of our fleet converted over to CNG. We're on the way there. In Margate, we've got two-thirds of our fleet converted to CNG already, and our goal is to get the rest of them done. It's a much greener fuel than using diesel. So now I want to talk about your green footprint. The decisions that were made by this commission on where they're going to take their garbage and use it for fuel to make energy was a huge decision. And we take it for granted, we put the garbage out at the curb, we don't even think about that it actually has a beneficial use, and we're using it to make electricity. Also the fact that the commission said, hey, you know what, we're going to implement a curb recycling program, that also was a huge action. We sit there, we put out a recycling, it gets picked up once a week, you don't think about, hey, what are the positive impacts? Yeah, we know, we're not using virgin material, and we're going to reuse some of the things that we bought, but it also, what is the actual impact? So I tried to kind of narrow it down because there are many different impacts based on how many plastic bottles, et cetera, but what I wanted to show you was that your garbage makes 16 million kilowatt-hours of electricity. The recycling that you process, that you set up for collection has helped save 18 million kilowatt-hours. So combined, it's a positive impact of 34 million kilowatt-hours. It's a huge impact. And as you can see at the bottom of the slide, it's enough electricity to power 3,400 homes per year. And we just, again, it's an action that has been done from the decisions from the commission that we don't think about, and I think everybody in the city needs to be proud about the fact that it gives you some positive green impacts from their actions. So what is that equated to? 2.7 million gallons of oil, 66,000 barrels of oil. And in actually talking with Aaron, he told me, he says, hey, you know, we use a lot of natural gas. So I decided to put in the presentation, we say over 272 million cubic feet of natural gas. So those are the green actions that are positive that we may not be thinking about on a day-to-day basis. So we talked about that green footprint, and I think we need to talk about another program that the commission decided to implement, which was the Recycle Bank Program. Program is one that offers residents rewards for green actions, just for registering and letting them know, hey, we recycle, self-reporting, there's tutorials you can do on their website. And based on this program, as you can see, in 2013, residents ordered $16,000 worth of rewards. Now, we know a reward, we'll say like one, there's one for Macy's, gives you $5 off a $50 purchase. We then use that to calculate, well, what's a conservative guesstimate of what we've put money back into local vendors? That's why we come up with this $23,000. So it's not just green actions that help the environment, they're also the green actions that help the economy. And I think those are things that everybody needs to be proud of, and they need to be aware of. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, share that information with you, and hopefully give you a little insight.
Thanks, Luigi. When is your Earth Day over there?
April 22nd is actually the actual Earth Day. There was an Earth Day celebration, SAG.
That was the, where they make the landfill out of?
Yes, hemidems and, yes.
Did we have any schools that participated?
Tony, I, did you have any schools show up there? I was out of town, so.
You have a part eight schools, Tony?
We had about eight schools.
Stand up, stand up, can't hear you. Tell your name.
Eight schools from the area showed up and participated. We had a great turnout over there, it was a great day.
We do have some good news for Margate Schools. They were part of the Green School Program at Recycle Bank, and Margate Middle had a goal of $2,500 to raise. They didn't quite get there, so our Recycle Bank and Waste Management were going to chip in $940 to get them to $1,250, half of their goal. And we also had abundant electrician school saying, we're going to chip in $883 to get them up to half of their goal for the Green Schools Program.
I like the fact that you can give your recycle points to some other people. I like that a lot. Commissioner Rosano.
Hey, you on the way?
Good, how you doing, Tony?
Good. You mentioned CNG. How much is it, CNG?
Mr. Commissioner, I don't, I really don't know because I don't buy it.
That's a question of the third parties, you're saying?
I'm sorry?
It's open to third parties?
Yes, it is. The gentleman, John Regan, who's the district manager, runs the CNG plan.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Luigi. You guys also have the scholarship coming up in the next few months, right?
Yes, we do. Get ready for president.
Has been out to Coconut Creek and to Coral Springs High School, and Nora Rupert, our area rep, also has the information. Hopefully we now went to the last minute and get a couple people. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time. Nice to meet you.
Athlete of the Month. Commissioner Rosano.
Good evening. Each month, Margate City Commission, Margate City Mayor, we honor an Athlete of the Month. And this month, I'm proud to announce this month's winner is Sophie Cagiano. Come on up, Tony. You want to bring some people up here with you? Who do you have there in the front row? Come on up, be shy. You got daddy over here, mommy over there, who else you got? Grandma, come on up, tradition. And what about the guy with the, senior, yours? Your teacher? Come on up, guys. In case you guys don't know, Sophie Cagiano, she's like the poster girl for the Chamber of Commerce, she comes to all the events, she comes to all the ribbon patting, so she's a, she's a known queen in the city of Margate. But this month, she's actually the Athlete of the Month winner. And teacher, would you like to read her accomplishment?
Sophia is a new student at Casey Chang Tech One Dome. She has been outstanding in her studies and training, and was recently awarded a Medal of Honor for attitude and behavior is nothing short of excellent. She's very committed and is a great example to others. I just wrote that. Very good. She actually came to us like a couple months ago. I just, I've been at the school for a long time, and I started working there about three years ago, and we decided to put in a kids program, because I can't think of a better way to help the world than through the children. And she came a couple months ago, and she's just a dream. She comes in, she follows the rules, she does what she's supposed to, takes class half the time, I don't even know she's there, you know? She's just awesome, and we just love her. She's been a great example to the other students. Sophia, we're very proud of you, and Grandmaster and I, and George, and Claudia love you very much. So I'm so glad you came to our school. Kind of thank you.
Now, maybe as you guessed, Sophia. First, we have a plaque from the city of Margate. Athlete of the Month, Sophia Cagiano, signed by Mayor Lee Spearman, Vice Mayor Joey X. Simone, Commissioners Brian Donahue, Tommy Rosano, and Frank B. Talari. That's yours, honey. Love that. Now, you get a beautiful pin that you can wear. You can wear this to your next meet, but don't wear a wire fort, I don't think that's allowed. Is that correct? Okay, now, you got a bag here. Bag is a backpack from Public Works, and inside, from donated by D's, the City Commission, and the CRA, is a History of Order book, Margate Recycles a book, pencils, pens, water bottles, a 50th anniversary keychain, a flashlight from the CRA, and a reflector from the CRA. Also, from the police department, that you get a badge that you can wear. And from the IT department, you get an Energizer, Energy2Go for the IT department, so you got power all the time. So there's that. Also, from Parks and Rec, you get two daily passes to Calypso Cove.
I said Drive Set.
Also, you got the Pro Sports Package from sports, your sports photo shots, and what you do is you call them up, and they come out and they'll film you while you're doing some of your kicks, and you can make up a nice little poster. It's all done by, you have to pack everything. Also, Black Belt Kenpo Academy? That's not you guys, all right? That's not us? Here's a gift certificate that is for, what are we at? One month of martial arts training. There you go, honey. We got a free teacher right now, so. A $25 from Nick Tralissium Pest Control. There you go. And last but not least, ooh, there's splurging. One free sundae from McDonald's. All together, ladies and gentlemen, Sophia. Congratulations, and thank you, Luigi.
Gee, that's kind of smiling up there. Sophia. Congratulations. Tori Recognitions, you got to take on tonight. Down to make you guys your proclamations. I'll do those. Share, share, Mayor, share. Ready? Can I have? Noreen Govey. You got family too? Bring them up. Come on, you embarrassed everybody equally. I'm going to, I'm going to all that, ready, read about you, and get off.
Thank you, Mayor. Noreen works as our duty tech in our distribution collection system, which maintains our water and sewer lines in the field. As part of the job description, or his role, is responsible to fix all the water main breaks and clear sewer lines, and also install the new water lines that we normally do on a yearly basis. And Noreen here was one of the first to get his license when the state required licenses to work on water mains. And since then, he's become a key member of our team. And right now, we're installing a water main on Seaton Drive, and he's running the crew there. So he's very reliable, and we are glad to have him on our team. Thanks, Tony.
City of Margate Certificate of Recognition for Noreen, Department of Environmental and Engineering, for 10 years' service as a city employee, signed by Mayor Lee Spearman, Vice Mayor Joey X. Simone, Brian Donahue Commissioner, Tommy Rosano Commissioner, and Frank B. Talari Commissioner. Congratulations, and we hope to get at least another 10. And here's your pen. Don't wear that. Thank you. Police Chief. Chief Watson. Wow. 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 Okay, I'm going to let, I'm just going to hold this thing and let you talk all the way.
Sounds like I got the easy job. Could I have Officer Crystal come up and bring us to the panel with him? He's on his way up here, and his family's on their way up here, right? I just want to congratulate him to start off with on his very short tenure here as a police officer. Officer Crystal's been here for two years, and we're recognizing him tonight as Officer of the Year. Officer of the Year is picked and selected by his peers, so it's quite an accomplishment. This prestigious recognition is awarded to personnel who distinguish themselves over the course of a year through demonstration of exemplary service to the department and the citizens of Margate. Officer Crystal was nominated for his prestigious award due to his professionalism, dedication, and continued support of the Margate Police Department's vision, mission, and values. Subsequent to Officer Crystal's completion of a police academy and field training program, his supervisors immediately noted his overt enthusiasm and intuitive nature in which he performed his patrol duties. Throughout the course of the past year, Officer Crystal has accomplished several things that distinguished, distinguished him among his peers. Officer Crystal received the Officer of the Month award in July, and a letter of commendation in August 2013. Officer Crystal's notable proactive initiatives resulted in the arrest of several subjects involved in burglaries and thefts within the community. His work ethic, calm demeanor, reliability, and high degree of professionalism are examples to others. Officer Crystal has demonstrated a strong commitment to the police department and the community alike. Officer Crystal's actions exemplify the highest caliber of law enforcement professionalism. His perseverance and dedication are certainly indicative of his professional efforts and unquestionable commitment to the law enforcement service in our community. On behalf of the Margate Police Department, I'm extremely pleased and exceptionally proud to bestow the honor of Officer of the Year upon you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, especially after just being here for two years.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Congratulations. Just like man of life here.
It's a great pleasure that I announce a new citizen community service aide, Pat Win, as a recipient of the Margate Police Department's Civilian of the Year Award for 2013. This prestigious recognition is awarded to personnel who distinguish themselves over the course of a year through demonstration of exemplary service to the department and the citizens of Margate. CSA Win supervisors noted that he frequently responds to the outer perimeter of in-progress crimes to observe the area from a safe distance. Though he does not intervene or assist in any in-progress crimes, CSA Win provides support by reporting suspicious persons and activities to police officers. On three separate occasions in 2012 and 2013, while on duty and overhearing volleys over the airways, CSA Win observed individuals resembling the subject's description leaving the area prior to police law enforcement arrival at the scene. Without his assistance, and in all probability, some of the subjects in these incidents may not have been caught and arrested. His observations have contributed to officers apprehending four burglary subjects during the year. In June and August of 2013, CSA Win received the Civilian of the Month award for his efforts. On behalf of the Margate Police Department, I am extremely pleased and exceptionally proud to bestow the honor of Civilian of the Year upon you. Congratulations.
He's also the guy that takes that surprise thing out and puts it in shopping centers and everything. You see him out there a lot, early in the morning. And look, watch. Congratulations. Good job. Okay, can I have Dr. Renar Poulsen, Secretary of the Paralyzed Veterans Association of Florida? Okay. Proclamation. Whereas residing within the boundaries of the city of Margate, many of our neighbors have served as members of the armed forces, and in doing so honored our community with exemplary dedication. And whereas, it is important that we recognize the sacrifices made by our community veterans who are paralyzed. And whereas, paralyzed veterans personify the highest ideals of service to their country, sacrifice of self, and preservation, preserve, never mind, in overcoming adversity and... Uh, in overcoming adversity, and whereas their stories of hardships and triumph provide life-affirming lessons for all of us. And whereas there are many local community service organizations, particularly those serving our youth, that seek involvement in worthy projects, and Paralyzed Veterans of America Awareness Month meets and surpasses that standard. Now therefore, I, Lisa Pearman, Mayor of the City of Margate, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Paralyzed Veterans of America Awareness Month in the City of Margate, and encourage the citizens of Margate to honor our paralyzed veterans and observe and participate in the activities associated with Paralyzed Veterans of America Awareness Month. And with this whereup, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Margate to be affixed the sixteenth day of April 2014. Lisa Pearman, Mayor, Vice Mayor Joanne Simone, Commissioner Brian Donahue, Commissioner Tommy Rosano, and Commissioner Frank B. Talerico. You want to say?
Well, I'd like to thank the City of Margate. My name is Dr. Renar Paulson, and the Paralyzed Veterans of America has been in existence for almost seventy years, shortly after World War II. And it's through awareness campaigns that we get our word out about your disabled veterans, your service members who go off and lose sometimes everything. And it's through this type of events that Margate is allowing us to attend, uh, that the work is out there, more awareness is made. So on behalf of the board of the Paralyzed Veterans of America in the Florida chapter, I thank you for this.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Donahue. Uh, Water Conservation Month. You know her? Okay. All right, you can do, Commissioner, you can do both.
All right.
Not she was.
Proclamation. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas the State of Florida Water Management District and the City of Margate are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. Whereas April, typically a dry month when water demands are highest, is annually designated as Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the City of Margate encourages and supports water conservation through various educational programs and special events, and whereas effort business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference and help by efficiently using water, thus promoting a healthy, uh, economy and community. And now therefore, the Mayor Lisa Pearman of the City of Margate do hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Water Conservation Month in the City of Margate, and call upon each citizen in business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water safety measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. In witness thereof, uh, the Mayor here have hereto, hereunto set her hand to cause the official seal of the City of Margate to be affixed the sixteenth day of April 2014. Signed, Lisa Pearman, Mayor, Vice Mayor Joanne Simone, Commissioners Brian Donahue, Tommy Rosano, and Frank B. Talerico.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. And on behalf of our South Florida Water Management District's executive leadership, I want to thank you and your city's leadership, as well as applaud your Public Relations Department, your Utilities Department, your Public Works Department for continuously getting the message out to our residents about conserving water. As you know, it's our most precious resource, and again, thank you.
A proclamation. Proclamation. Whereas safe, clean, and sustainable water resources are essential to Florida's environment, economy, citizens, and visitors, and whereas Florida's water supplies are finite while our population, uh, and our need for water resources continues to increase, and whereas water refuse, uh, provides a means of conserving and augmenting Florida's precious water resources. And whereas Florida has established, uh, the encouragement and promotion of water reuse as state objectives in chapters three seventy-three and four oh three Florida statutes, and whereas Florida permitted reuse capacity exceed 1.7 billion gallons per day, more than sixty-seven percent of Florida's total permitted capacity for all domestic water, uh, wastewater treatment facilities. And whereas Florida leads the nation in reusing seven hundred and twenty-five million gallons of reclaimed water each day, uh, to conserve fresh water supplies and recharge our fresh water resources. And whereas the State of Florida has declared the week of May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, uh, 2014 to be Water Reuse Week in Florida. And whereas the City of Margate Department of Environmental and Engineering Services has joined with the State of Florida, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the, uh, South Florida Water Management District in encouraging and promoting water reuse and conservation. And whereas the City of Margate Department of Environmental and Engineering Services has evaluated and incorporated a water reuse program in the city, in the city's long-term capital improvement program. Now therefore, the Mayor Lisa Pearman, Mayor of the City of Margate, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, 2014 as Water Reuse Week in the City of Margate, and call upon each citizen in business to help protect our precious resource by participating , uh, water conservation and the use of water resources in efficient and effective means. In witness thereof, the Mayor has, uh, hereunto set her hand and cause the official seal of the City of Margate to be affixed the sixteenth day of April 2014. Signed, Lisa Pearman, Mayor, Vice Mayor Joanne Simone, Commissioners Brian Donahue, Tommy Rosano, and Frank B. Talerico.
Not to echo what I just said, but in advance of our Reuse Week, I want to thank these departments for their work in, uh, doing everything that they can possibly to continue recycling the water and reusing the water in simple terms, so thanks again.
She didn't get a book of water. Ready? Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, National Day of Prayer, Vice Mayor Simone.
If I could please have Pastor CJ Walter from Coatesboro United Methodist Church come up, and also the Subcommittee for MICA to receive this proclamation. Let me just say that it is truly a lesson to be here standing in this position to present Margate's first, first National Day of Prayer proclamation. Thanks, Bea.
Proclamation. Whereas throughout America's history, citizens have united during times of challenge to join together in prayer. Prayers have been lifted to express gratitude, request guidance and direction, and make petitions known. And whereas a modern law formalizing the annual service of a National Day of Prayer was enacted by Congress in nineteen fifty-two and was amended in nineteen eighty-eight to designate the first Thursday of May as National Day of Prayer. And Americans are called to a day of prayer on the first Thursday of May annually. And whereas Thursday, May first, two thousand and fourteen, is designated as the sixty-third Annual United States National Day of Prayer, and its theme is One Voice, United in Prayer. And whereas residents shall gather together in Margate and throughout the United States to unite in prayer for our nation, our leaders, and our people. And they shall recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of the men and women of the United States Armed Forces for their commitment to uphold the nation's ideals, and recognize that it is because of them that Americans can continue to live in a nation where people of all faiths can worship or not worship according to the dictates of their conscience. And whereas Margate Initiative for Community Action and Hope, MICA, a faith-based community organization formed to serve and enrich the local community, calls Margate's residents of all faiths to come together for a time of prayer, peace, and goodwill. As residents join together, letting them focus on the less fortunate, commit to feed the hungry, comfort the hurting, lift up the downtrodden of the community, and remember that through unity and respect for each other, Margate will become a strong and thriving city. Now therefore, Lisa Pearman, Mayor of the City of Margate, do hereby proclaim May first, two thousand and fourteen, as National Day of Prayer. In the City of Margate, and in the spirit of unity and reflection, encourage everyone to join together in our city to pray for our nation, state, and city, and join MICA at Margate's first annual National Day of Prayer gathering on May first, two thousand and fourteen, at Margate Elementary School at six thirty PM. In witness whereup, Lisa B. Pearman, hereunto has set her hand and caused the official seal of the City of Margate to be affixed the sixteenth day of April, two thousand and fourteen. Signed by Mayor Lisa Pearman, Commissioner Joanne Simone, Commissioner Brian Donahue, Commissioner Tommy Rosano, and Commissioner Frank B. Talerico.
On behalf of MICA, we hope that you'll be able to come and join us at Margate Elementary. This idea has been a long time coming in many, many quarters, and we're just delighted to see houses of faith and the schools and other non-governmental, nonprofit organizations working for the welfare of Margate. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
All right, we're gonna take about a seven-minute, eight-minute break, so everybody who wants to leave can go ahead and leave. And we're back. Commissioner Pennants, Commissioner Donahue.
Good evening. It was really an honor to be invited to the Grace Academy National Elementary Honor Society induction ceremony today. As, as I was looking over their, um, statement, uh, their mission statement and their school-wide pledge, I was very impressed with what they're teaching these young people, and to watch them get this award, or to join the Honor Society. The children there are our future, and to encourage them scholastically, in so many ways, uh, artistically, to encourage them to participate in the civics and things like that, as they describe all of these things, it was great to watch, and I really appreciate, uh, our Vice Mayor and myself being there. One of the things I would like to do is, as we were talking about the, uh, we are now starting to work on a multicultural, uh, advisory committee. I, I've been talking to certain organizations about it, and rather than just have us all over the place on it, I have some talking points that I was able to borrow from some of the other cities and utilize that as a, as a template in which we can discuss what the multicultural committee would be. And let me pass this out to you guys, so that if, we can adopt anything there, but at least it gives us, uh, a page to be on, you know, with us all being on the same page. Um, we can tweak it any way we want, but at least it gives us an idea, an outline as to how to address creating the multicultural, uh, organization in the city. And it's good to have the talking points. I foresee doing something like that for the Adopt a Street program or the Adopt a Park program as well, so once again, we have a clearer idea as to how to approach this, and then we're all on the same page. I, I attended the Sounds at Sundown and the Movies in the Park, uh, Margate, you're great. Thank you for coming out in force. It's wonderful to see the participation. There are so many people in the community that are out there enjoying what we're offering, and the feedback is wonderful, and the events are really good. And it, to watch community, that's what we are. Community is not the building or the streets or the government. Community is the people, and to watch people participate in that community is awesome. So thank you, Margate, for turning out for these events. Yes, you can clap. For those people who observe the holiday of Passover, Happy Passover, and Happy Easter to those people who celebrate that holiday. Thank you.
Commissioner Rosano.
Good evening. Uh, just to piggyback off what he said, the movie was great, Parks and Recs. You guys did a great job, and, uh, coming up May third at eight PM is The Amazing Spider-Man, so you guys did a great job, and I, I applaud you for that. On another note, just have something, a special announcement. Um, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but we had a Margate resident, Yessenia Malina, she was crowned Miss Broward County of two thousand and fourteen, so, you know, hats off to her, and, you know, this is something I think we should have on her website, you know, possibly, just to show, you know, Margate is representing, and, uh, you know, hats off to her, and, uh, congratulations. Uh, on another note, we gave out a couple of awards tonight, the Police Department and the, and these, and you know what? Maybe I don't say it in the past, but you guys do a great job. I received a letter about two weeks ago from a resident up in New York, and I'm sure you all did too. Um, it was concern about a friend of theirs in Coral of theirs in Coral Caddy. And to be honest with you, it was a lifesaving call that was made to the City of Margate. The police chief, you know, you guys did a great job. You guys basically saved that person's life, that couple. And, you know, I applaud you for that. And thank you. And as far as the Ds and the water department, ready? You guys do a great job. And I appreciate that last week I was leaving the baseball game, I think around 6:30, and your guys were there in a hole fixing a water main, or a force main. And I know I drove by it today, it was all patched. And it's nice to see that, you know, that kind of work is done in-house. And, you know, it's funny, when you talk about Margate, you know, we are a fortunate city where we do have our own fire department. We have our own police department. We have our own water and sewer. And I don't know how many cities in Broward County can say that besides maybe Coral Springs. But, you know, we do everything here. And I like it like that. And, you know, I want to see it stay like that. Not saying that's gonna change, but I'm just saying my thought on it. What else do I have here? Oh, coming up, we have the Waste Management. It's a scholarship program. You guys can go online. You can download the application. And I think we only had a couple applicants last year. It's a great, it's a great $2,500 scholarship. Take advantage of it. Go online and check it out. That's about it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes, I just have a.
That was a nice report. You deserve a hand.
Commissioner, Commissioner Versano, we don't yell from the audience.
My apologies to you, Madam Mayor. May I make a comment in regards to the comments that he made?
No, you can wait till.
Well, also, I was gonna say that.
Good advice, Mayor Simone.
Thank you. Very nice.
Yes, I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec Department and also I think the City Manager's Office for putting out the events, what's happening flyer. I would like to see if we could take that one step further and possibly put up a banner on Firefighters' Park to advertise the volleyball. And now that we have pickleball, I know that we do have a volleyball that can be checked out. And pickleball equipment has been ordered. So I'd like to see possibly getting a banner if we could on the fence of Firefighters' Park to advertise those features a little bit better.
Okay, we'll check into that.
Thank you. I would also, our grand opening signs, from what I'm hearing from the businesses that are utilizing them right now, they are a great asset for them. Eyes on Atlanta, the first day she had the grand opening banner, she had three new customers walk in her door just from that banner. What I'd like to have a little discussion on and possibly have staff look into this for me is to expand our grand opening sign program to include other businesses that have already been here more than a year, to help out our older businesses. You know, we could utilize the same signs that we have now. How the program would work is that we would take down the grand opening banner and each month on a revolving basis, the businesses in the plaza would put up a sign similar to what's up there now. It just won't say grand opening. It could say welcoming. It could say featuring. But it would be on a month-to-month rotating basis. I know a lot of our shopping plazas have stores that you cannot see. They're in the back. I know Palm Lakes Plaza, I walked the plaza and spoke to several of the tenants. And they were all in favor of having advertisement on that pole that's already erected. So I know there may be some legalities as far as, you know, if it has to be a timeframe or who we can include or exclude as far as if there's, you know, if they already have, their name is already on the monument sign from the business, then we probably won't want to offer the program to them. It would be for people that don't have any advertisement. So if we could look into the legalities of that, I would appreciate it and see if we can expand this program a little bit better.
Do you want the consensus with the commissioners for that?
Yes, yes.
Can we get consensus for that, to have staff look into the possibility of using those grand opening, I'm gonna say polls because it's not really signs, who's grand opening structures, to have staff look into it and come back with us?
Sure, anytime if you have our business with that.
Exactly.
I don't see any.
City manager.
We will report back to you, obviously, if we're gonna expand the parameters of that program that we require and ordinance coming back in the future. But we'll describe that in the report that we bring back to you.
Okay, thank you. I would also like to echo what Commissioner Rosado said. Congratulations to the Margate residents, Yessenia Malina for being crowned Miss Broward County 2014. Our aid is very proud of you. The Rose Academy School of Science and Technology, their program today was fabulous. They were very much appreciative that we were there. You would think that the President of the United States had locked in. So they were thrilled to have us there. To Frank Talarico, I hope he feels better soon. So get well, Frank. And Happy Passover to those who celebrate Passover. And Happy Easter to those that celebrate that. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, the, so much for the surprises on that. That Miss Broward is going to be brought here and given the key to the city. So we are going to acknowledge her as well as the soccer team that came back from, for their achievements in the future. I don't really have much. I will say to the chief, thank you for fixing that issue on 31st with the charter school that was stopping traffic when they really weren't supposed to be stopping traffic. It was a mess. It was an absolute mess. And Assistant City Manager, I need to get a charter school looking to come in over Coconut Creek. And hopefully, instead of just looking at how many cars go up and down the street, we'll also, you know, address when they let out and stuff like that. Because that 31st thing has been a nightmare over there since the charter schools are over there. So I hope we keep that in mind when they go to DRC, hopefully. Other than that, oh, Happy Passover and Happy Easter. Public discussion.
Good evening. Rich Aliaro, 7631 Northwest 23rd Street. I just would like to echo what Commissioner Rosado said in reference to our entire police force, fire rescue. I just hope we keep it all intact and we don't lose them. I heard a little crack in your voice, Tommy, hope it's not true. But I want to keep it all together like it is because it is a fine family, fine police force, and a great fire rescue. Just as a resident, I'd just like to say that. And that's all I have for you tonight. And thank you and everybody. Have a Happy Passover and a Happy Easter. Thank you.
Commissioners, Mayor. Scott Yardley, 5948 Liffle Boulevard. At the last city commission meeting, a gentleman came up here and gave you guys the right act about being racist. And he noted that there was no color, ethnicity in the dais. The response for the most part was they were elected by the people. And I see that except for one very vital point. The city, the election method is by seat, citywide. Now, it should be by seat, voting only by seat, or citywide, the tops of many win. There are regions of the city that are very high in certain ethnicities, especially South Margate. And if there truly was representation on a seat basis, you would have certain, you'd have more ethnicity up here. It would only take one election for that to happen. So I do challenge the system to be racist, not intentionally, but the system is. The idea of a seat is a representation of someone of your area and of your interest and of your voice. And we take that away because it helps people stay in office. Now, this predates everybody up here, but it is the method at hand. And I challenge the current structure and I call it racist. Again, it did not originate of all of you guys, but it'll go where you want it to go. Thank you for your time.
Rick Riccardi, 4829 South Hemingway Circle, President of Chamber. Just want to say that, you know, we had our first multicultural meeting today. It was not as great as I would hope, but at least it was a start. And I think, you know, it's how we reach out to the different multicultural people, how they even know that we want them, that's our difficult thing. How to reach the right people to let them know it's caring, that we care and we really want them to participate. And I find that to be our challenge. We're gonna have our membership meeting next Thursday and a board meeting after that. And I invite commissioners to be there if they'd like to join us for that. As another topic, as you know, last year we had our fundraiser for various drug and alcohol prevention for children. We're doing that again this year through the Fellowship Foundation. I do invite the city to participate and get a team out there if all possible. It's the 28th, it's a Monday of April. It's at the Parkland Country Club. As you know, that's an exclusive country club. It's $175 a person. But when you walk out, you get $125 worth of golf equipment, that's your choice. And you get lunch and you get free everything all day and the golf. So in essence, it's free. You get everything back. So, but all right, if you could, if you could just think about possibly adding a team, it'd be wonderful. You know, we do support the DARE program here as one of our benefits for children. So thank you.
You have a team last year?
Yes, yes.
You did?
Yes.
Anybody want to make that up?
I would like to make a motion that we had a team this year on behalf of everything the Fellowship does for our city. You know, I know they take care of our city, clean up our roads. You know, they do a lot with the DARE program. I would like to see Margate, you know, sponsor another team this year, same way we did it last year, sort of.
There are second? Second? Discussion. Public. Okay, I'll roll for that, please.
Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Mayor Pierman?
Yes. Put it out there. We need golfers again.
We will get word out.
Thank you.
Richard Edens, 3043 Northwest 72nd Avenue. I want to thank you first about the National Day of Prayer. This takes a lot of courage. We all know this country needs prayers right now. And I wish we could take that and extend it back into the public schools. You know, when they took prayer out of schools in '63, the country's been on a moral decline ever since. And we really need to, it's time to push back. It's time for us to push back and take control of what's going on in the public schools specifically. And that's why you're seeing a rise of charter schools because parents have just had enough of having their kids being brainwashed with the nonsense that's going on in there. The other thing I wanted to mention, this, the business about elections, free and fair elections, all this other business. You know, a number of cycles ago, the Margate citizens approved the term limits. And it seemed like in exchange for that, or maybe it wasn't in exchange for that, we moved our elections from the normal municipal period in the first quarter of an election year to, in line with the federal cycles, the November election. And I'm wondering now that a number of the people that might have been a party to that are no longer sitting up there, can we take an honest look? I mean, the reason that the people were given at that time was to save money. And it cost a million dollars or whatever it is. But we still pay the supervisory election and all of our people to go out all over the county to do these municipal elections. So there's other cities that are, that they're sitting commissions or trying to move them to the general where there's better turnout. But I think if we take an honest look at what that's all about, informed people come out for the municipal elections. And those people, I would hazard a guess, would be more in tune with what's going on in the city and would have, you know, you would end up with a better election result if you move it away from the other election that has a lot of special interests that drive people out there. So two things, I'd like to understand why we thought we really needed to move it. And if there, and if money is the only thing, the fact that the supervisory elections has to do it anyway, then I'd like to understand why we think that we can't have ours where they're supposed to be.
First of all, yeah, it does save money to move to the November elections. But, and I'm being as honest as I possibly can with you on this, because I sat out there a number of years. March elections favor the incumbents because there's so few people that come out for the March elections. November elections, and it's not only federal, but it's state November, the November elections save money and they bring more voters out. So instead of having the typical 2,000 people that come out in March, you have what we had last November, which was over 15,000, I believe, or close to that. So you have more people come out, so more people have a say. March elections and the cities that keep March elections is because it favors the incumbents.
But did the city actually pay for the election?
They have to pay for March elections, yes.
We as taxpayers are paying for that?
For the March elections, yes. That's why we moved it. Wait, wait, come back up here. I got it, I got it, Gene. You want to sit here? You can sit here. Okay. The March elections, we pay for. The November elections, it's very minimalist if we pay anything. The March elections usually run around 80,000, something like that. Even the August election, which we will have in August, which is a primary, is gonna cost us something. But it's nothing near what the March elections have. So it is, it's about saving taxpayers' money for, and giving them more of an opportunity to come out and vote for their city commission. Joe has figures? Oh, this Joe. I thought that Joe. Go ahead, Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor. The most recent estimate that the City Parks Office received for various early from the November election is $17,902. And that's a higher estimate. We predicted a company of around $15,800 based on past analysis.
As opposed to what is usually a March election, which I know is usually around $75, $80,000?
I've never been through one, but I believe the range is between 16 and 75,000.
So it's a lot of money. And you want more voters to come out. You want more of a.
Well, you want educated. In my opinion, you want educated voters to come out. You don't want more voters. You want people that are engaged in city politics that can make those decisions to carry the city forward. That's just my opinion. I think that, like the people that you have here at these meetings, these people know what's going on here. And of course, probably the people that are listening in know what's going on as well. But there's probably 80% of the population that could really care less about what's going on here. And so I would just think that you would have a more educated electorate at these, you know, at the elections that are special purpose like.
Well, I would tell you, 20 some odd years of the same commissioners up here with March elections. So you could, call it however, you know, that's my personal opinion is, March elections are favor the incumbents. And I don't ever want to do that. Commissioner?
Thank you.
Richard Edens, I just want to comment on what you said earlier about the prayer back in school. And I agree 100%. Our country is in need of prayer. I was watching last week on the news and Dr. Rosalyn Osgood, school board member, she. I was watching last week on the news, and Dr. Rosalyn Osgood, school board member, she made a statement talking about the way kids were dressing in school, and it's glad to see that somebody like her would make a stand. I don't know if she can do anything about it, but it's just the way these kids are dressing, and, you know, it starts from the home and it goes right to the schools. So, you know, I'm all, I agree 100% there.
Good evening, Joyce Bryan, 7005 Northwest 17th Street. Anne?
Eddie, Christopher Earl, 6600 Grandmont Drive South.
We are here as members of Relay for Life. We want to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, Commissioner Rosano, Commissioner Brian Donahue, Assistant City Manager, City Clerk, and various offices. We had a fantastic Relay for Life this year. We had a great turnout. All of you were there participating, and we want to thank you for that. In fact, our team, the Margate Moonwalkers, we just rocked it, and we have a few of our members here. Would you just stand up, Margate Moonwalkers? Come on. Just Joseph? Thank you. Andrew did a fantastic job with his rockers, but most importantly of all, we have to thank our team captain, Carol DiLorenzo, and her husband, John, and their daughter. They came out and they were there all the time. So, we are really proud of the city of Margate, what we did for the Relay for Life, and almost close to goal, so thank you again. Eddie?
Just wanted to say the same thing. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. It was a wonderful event. We appreciate all of you being there, especially staying all night. It was just incredible. Thank you very much. We're also regrouping, starting with Strides Against Breast Cancer. I will be contacting you to get another team going. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rich Popovich, 6066 Woody Field Boulevard. I have a laugh at some of the comments that come up here. I sit, you know, listen to them. First of all, was waste management coming up, and let me tell you, they're probably the worst, and most people don't realize what they're doing. They're building that big dump out there because they know global warming's coming down the road. And they're looking for all the people that live out on Long Fort, Royal Boulevard, come over and buy property on their big hill, so when global warming comes, they can sit around and look at the ocean. It sounds pretty stupid, don't it? But that's, that's how things work around here. And then we're giving an award to the water treatment woman. I mean, why are we giving her an award to anything? We're treating our own water. We're taking our own dirty water, bikini, and drinking it, and we're giving her an award. We already give ourselves an award. Really, that's what deserves the award. We did that on our own. We didn't do that from anybody else, for real. And I know that for a fact. Another thing was, is, I was just listening to, talking about March elections, and let me tell you, the reason why we had incumbents in there so long wasn't because of March elections, it was because of the way the system's set up. And the previous speaker who spoke about being racist, that's not true. It's not racist. It's set up for who's in charge. It has nothing to do with racism. If they had five butt people sitting out there, it'd be very hard to get rid of them because they're in power. They can do what they want. You know, I mean, that's the way the system's set up. It doesn't have anything to do with racism, and it had nothing to do with that. The reason why the budget removed in March would help the incumbents totally, because they know that all the Democrats, especially in Broward County, are coming out with all that Democratic lever, for any Democrat that runs out there, no matter how ironic you are. And that's what sucks. It really does. March elections was like he said, you might get that, and I've run many, many times, I know. A lot more to even hurt. And if you have seven, eight, nine thousand people come out and vote, they're usually informed, they're paying attention, whether they like you or not, but they pay attention. When you get all them people coming out, I look at the November election, come out and voted, they have a clue how to vote for. They're not talking to southern people. They're listening to that gobbledygook running through the lines, and whose picture they put up there. But it wasn't democracy, or actually, being a republic, how it's supposed to work, it's more than really not a democracy. And so, I think that was probably the worst thing that ever happened to Margate, other than not giving us districts to vote in and changing our charters to a more intelligent way so that we can elect memories.
Consent agenda. There is nothing. City Managers report.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner, just have several quick project updates for you. Paving project of Margate Boulevard, west of Rock Island Road, and also a separate section, a turn lane, eastbound turn lane from Rock Island to Royal Palm. That project began today. That'll be around a two-week project. And the City Hall parking lot restoration project will start towards the end of May, planned for May 28th. This will be a staged project with some evening and weekend work, and it'll be about a two to three-week project. That's all for this evening.
A resolution of the city of Margate, Florida, program reallocation of $242,658 in unused community development block grant, CDVG funds, remain from completed projects for each fiscal year from 2003 to 2008, 2011, 2012, providing for funds for fiscal year 2014 for home rehabilitation program.
Resolution, Commissioner?
726.
Second?
Discussion? Public?
Richard Edens, 304-3 Northwest 72nd Avenue. Do you remember when we all voted for the sign for the road bond? You know, I was one of those yes votes on the road bond before I realized that my home, which is a part of the 400 homes up in the Carolina areas that pays the majority of the property taxes for the city. It was sometime later when the trucks came by my house and left that I realized my neighborhood wasn't going to be done. And so, if this city is finding itself with grants for upgrading neighborhoods and such as that, I would ask that you send some of the engineers over to the Carolinas and look at the state of disarray of our roads and do something to help us. I mean, they're at their point of towing our cars because we park in the street, because there's way too many people living in the houses, which is another problem, you know, I'll bring another day. But these neighborhoods that are some of the highest paying taxes in the city are going into a terrible state of disarray, and you need to take a look at them before that whole tax base is gone for you. I would just ask that, you know, we've been trying to get our homeowners association to build up the reserves so we can do something with the roads, but we're not there. And if you have money to rehabilitate and you want to preserve tax base in the city, I would ask that you go through the areas of the Carolinas and take a look at what we're up against over there. Thank you.
And we have a stand.
Actually, Ben can come up and talk a little bit about how this program works, because these funds are restricted, because they call rehabilitation. Ben, committee, add just a little bit about the parameters for that kind of program, if you could, Ben.
Assistant City Manager, can I ask one question quick? This isn't bond money, correct? This is?
No, this is community development. This is grant funds, and I think the speaker did refer to grant funds as part of what his question is.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Ben Ziskel, Director of Economic Development. As was read by the city attorney in the resolution, what this item before you tonight is a reallocation of funds that previously had been assigned to the city of Margate dating back to 2003. The city of Margate, as an entitlement community, receives CDVG funds annually from the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Department, and every year, there are portions of those grants that are allocated towards administration, towards project delivery, and towards other administrative type of activities. This money is taking all of the leftover money from those other uses from 2003 until today and reallocating them into the home rehabilitation program, which dating back to 2003, that totals $242,000, which will allow us to rehabilitate approximately six to 12 additional homes. The parameters for this program are that all monies must benefit low and moderate income families, so the households that are chosen are of that low, moderate income family. We do help a lot of our seniors on fixed incomes with these programs, but they are not eligible for road improvements in areas that are not low, moderate income, a particular neighborhood that was mentioned is not eligible for CDVG funds.
I get that, and I got that, but can we have staff over and take a look at their roads over there? I don't know why they didn't get done with the road bond.
Sure, we can.
Those are homeowners associations, or?
Sam, yes, please come up, Sam.
Confused about private streets, Coral Bay's private streets, homeowners associations are private, why would you have a private homeowners associations?
Sam, they public works director. Those roads were, are private streets. We did not pave any private streets in the city of Margate with our road bond. It was only for public thoroughfares. The road he's questioning about, Margate Boulevard, this is the last road to be resurfaced that is using the road bond money, the last of the road bond money. That road had a micro-surfacing treatment on there, which lasted about eight years. It's at the very end of its life cycle. It's now time to redo that with the remaining road bond money. That will complete the road bond money, and it will also, we will have resurfaced every public thoroughfare public road in the city of Margate, but we did not use that money for private roads.
Okay, so my question is, I mean, again, it's off topic a little bit. I do know that there were grants at one point, when the grant board was around, where they worked with Paradise Gardens to redo their roads. Are those grants now no longer available, or?
I believe, as Ben spoke earlier, those were low to moderate income neighborhoods. That was Paradise Gardens, one that was resurfaced with the CDVG money.
Okay.
They were public roads that was?
I'm not done with this, but okay, first.
They were low to moderate income. I was actually on that board also.
Yeah, I was out in the audience, like, how did you do it tonight? All right, I'm not done with it yet, but tonight I'm done with it, so go ahead.
2020-3194 West Burnie Vista Drive. It's sad and to me to come up here and have to explain this once again, that Coral Bay is not a private community. They are not private streets. They are public streets, just like Margate is a public street. Even though we pay the taxes to repave all of your streets, we pay double taxes to repave our own streets, but that does not make them private. We are not an HOA. We are a body of government. So, since these are Margate streets and not Florida streets, they're not private, they're public. Margate is a public entity. Coral Bay is a public entity. We cannot shut our pools, we cannot shut our streets, we cannot shut our tennis courts. If you want to come play tennis in Coral Bay, we have to let you. We are a public entity, not a private. We did not shut the streets off. We restricted access to preserve the money that we are spending. Well, to make it clear to the citizens that don't understand this, we shut the streets of Coral Bay simply because since we have to pay for our streets, we are trying to control the traffic on them, but we cannot restrict you. If you come into Coral Bay, just like if you go to Star Island, when streets are originally made with public money, they can never be closed to the public. You may have to ask to come in, but we will not restrict you. We are just controlling the amount of traffic so we don't have to pay for people to use this as a shortcut from Rock Island Road to 441. But they are not public, private streets, and we are not an HOA.
Okay, I'm still not done with this, but I am tonight. Commissioner Rosano?
First, I want to say Coral Bay has some nice streets, that's number one. Number two, this $242,000, is it earmarked for anything in the future, number one? And is there restrictions of what we can use this money for?
Yes. Want to come up here and say again what you just said?
Go ahead. Yes, sir. All of the money currently is broken up into annual increments and earmarked for different activities for each year that it was given to us. This item before you will take all of those increments, combine it into one pot of money, and allocate it to this year's home rehabilitation.
Okay. Commissioner Donahue? Oh, who's flashing? Oh, I'm sorry, city attorney's flashing.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the private versus public. Yes, Coral Bay, Coral Bay's roads are managed by another public entity. So, just as we would not pave Atlantic Boulevard, which is paved by Broward County, we would not use our funds to pave the Coral Bay CDD's roads. That is their function. Their board makes those decisions. As far as Carolina, the developer, when he developed those roads, determined that they would be private in the sense that they would be maintained and they would be controlled, and they would meet the standards of that homeowners association. So, that's the difference. Carolina, those are private roads in the sense that they must be maintained pursuant to what was recorded in the, in the public records of Broward County by the community that built them. The Coral Bay, CDD, those are, that's a public entity, and again, as determined by the public records of Broward County.
I'll roll. I'm sorry.
Rich Popovich, 6066 Woody Field Boulevard. This is coming from the county, right? You're not sure? Not sure about what streets we own and where the grants are coming from? Come on, somebody has to know what else is going on up here.
Maybe they're federal funds, are they not? They're federal funds, Mr. Popovich.
Yeah. Okay, so we're getting more federal funds now from the federal government, which has no money, and which gave to you years ago, and you just couldn't figure out how it pissed it away then, so now we're reallocating it into another bumped-up grant so you can do it again, which I find ridiculous, and I'm against any federal money being used at any level for anything. It's an extension of them trying to intrude upon our lives and taking money they don't have to spend needlessly. Things in Margate get fixed up and done on their own. I watched it. I lived here for a very long time, and the people here are very resourceful. They purchase our homes when they're beat up, and they fix them up themselves, and they live in them. I think they, works. It's a very wonderful program. It's called self-reliance. That's what we need to go back to. The federal government, which has no money, which is borrowing it from the Chinese, and uses this as a play to try and look like they're being wonderful, and do people use the same program? You use it to look like you're wonderful. And that's what I really resent about all this, because the amount of money that's consistently lost in all these federal programs over a basis, it's like, it's literally insane. If you were a private company, I think you'd all be fired, like, before you even got the job, if you just expressed your ideas that you want to lose money. I mean, losing money, really? Don't give me this stuff, that's for the benefit of everybody and all, because I know who gets these grants around here. I've seen the same people get two and three grades over and over again. So, don't tell me that there's no games being played or nothing's going on around here. This don't benefit everybody, this, I know what benefits. It isn't doing any good for us. We don't have the money. The best thing you do is don't take it. Buckle up. We can just take care of our own people. I told you we should start our own shit program. Remember we bring that up? We should have, we should take our own taxpayers' money and fix our own homes up ourselves, and don't rely on the federal government. Show some self-reliance. and don't rely on the federal government, show some self-reliance, be independent, it's a wonderful thing.
Follow.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Birman.
Yes. Next.
A resolution of the City of Margate, Florida changing the street name, I'm sorry.
No, no, you have to do what happens when people don't take the grant money.
A resolution of the City of Margate, Florida accepting an additional seven thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars in community development block grant, block grant, CDVG funds providing for funds to be used for home rebuild.
Okay, what's the wish of the commission?
Is that left to approve?
Second. Discussion. Public.
What does this have to do with not taking the block grant?
Weston didn't take their portion of the block grant, so they reallocated to other cities in the Broward County area, that's what they do with grant money, when you don't take grant money, they give it to other cities.
Last time I looked at Weston, I don't think they needed it, I see some really beautiful homes and a very well-planned community, I've worked, done many jobs out in Weston and, uh, I doubt they have very many section handhouses on out there or they actually.
But they're eligible for it.
Yeah, or they need it, well, that's because they don't have to take it, you see, that's how this works, you can take it or you can not take it, so you could magnetize your city or you let everybody stand up on their reliability and make their community a stronger place to live by self-reliance and being able to take care of themselves. Uh, I, I grew up in the Northeast and I watched what the socialized thing does with giving people things and I've never seen any benefit of, as a matter of fact, it turns people's brains in, in the dishware if you ask me.
Okay. Follow.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Birman.
Yes. Next.
A resolution of the City of Margate, Florida changing the street name of Rancho Old Art to Celebration Point Boulevard.
What's the wish of the commission?
I'm looking through.
Second. Discussion. Public. I see you.
Rich Allen Olo, seventy-six thirty-one Northwest Twenty-third Street, I'd just like to get a comment in, I think it's a great idea you did this, Celebrate, uh, Point Boulevard, I talked with those people outside last meeting and they gave out some good information and I wish them luck, okay, hopefully this goes through this way and it flourishes that portion of the city because it's been in such disarray so long, I'm looking forward to seeing that, so I just want to make that comment, thank you.
Rich Popovich, six oh six six Winfield Boulevard, and then we say that, I, I remember a problem with changing a name to Celebration Point, but I find it seriously ironic considering how the people who were kicked out of there, literally kicked out and left the place empty for a so long a period of time with no tax revenue and everything else that happened there, which was a total disgrace the way everybody was treated, really, and, uh, so I kind of, kind of, we're, we're pretty for you, they pretended to be Celebration Point, I just hope it winds up actually really being that.
Yeah, that was it, okay.
Follow. Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Birman.
Yes.
A resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving a plat note amendment on Celebration Point according to the plat book thereof is reported in plat book one seventy-eight, page sixty-seven of the public records of Broward County, Florida, change the bedroom count and dwelling unit mix provided on the plat note restriction providing an effective date.
What's the wish of the commission?
Is that left to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Public.
Twenty twenty three one nine four West Pointe Vista Drive, I'd just like to hear what it's being changed from to.
Three bedroom, I believe, from a.
It's right in the resolution, I'll read it if you'd like.
Go ahead.
The current restriction recorded, the current restriction recorded on the Celebration Point plat reads, this plat is restricted to five hundred and eighty garden apartments consisting of two hundred and seventy-six one-bedroom units, two hundred and forty-eight two-bedroom units and fifty-six three-bedroom units, the city commissioner of the City of Margate, Florida hereby approves the proposed Celebration plat note restriction which shall read, this plat is restricted to five hundred and eighty garden apartments consisting of two hundred and ten one-bedroom, uh, one-bedroom, three hundred and two two-bedroom and sixty-eight three-bedroom units, so the overall count doesn't change, but the mix changes.
Follow.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Birman.
Yes. Yes. You got something?
Yeah. Set.
Up, set.
An ordinance amending section four point two of appendix A of the code of the City of Margate, Florida, reconfirming the following real property to be rezoned from T one Mobile Home Park District to a planning and development PUD providing for amendment of the name from Broadstone Montebello to Celebration Point providing for amendment from two hundred and ninety garden apartments in phase one with four hundred and twelve garden apartments overall, two hundred and eighty-two garden apartments in phase one with five hundred and eighty garden apartments overall, providing for redistribution of perimeter landscape buffer in phase one, providing for other amendments to the phase one site plan, uh, legal description tract A of Celebration Point according to the plat book thereof is reported in plat book one seventy-eight, page sixty-seven of the public records of Broward County, Florida, and containing two point nine point five acres, excuse me, two, nine point five acres more or less, providing for, be provided for effective date.
What's the wish of the commission?
Is that left to approve?
Second. Discussion. Did you all get together with the condom behind you and have discussions? Jane?
Yeah.
Let's double check in. Public.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Ballmer, I live at six six three one Coral Lake Drive in the Coral Gate community, I've lived there for twenty-eight years, and I have a question about the last commission meeting, uh, I listened to the conversation and I listened to it again online and I heard a couple of times that it was important to vote in favor of this ordinance because it affected the comp plan and that if it wasn't favorably approved, that it would be a technical violation of the comp plan, and that my question is, how does it affect the comp plan, specifically how it relates to the redistribution of the landscape buffer?
Yes, good evening, Ben Zisco, Director of Economic Development, the discussion that took place at the last meeting, um, that I spoke to and the city attorney spoke to, was the fact that we are required to have our comprehensive plan and our zoning match, the comprehensive plan has already been changed to five hundred and eighty units through a land use plan amendment that was approved at the city, the county and the state level, the zoning currently restricts it to four hundred and twelve, therefore there's a balance that doesn't match, so the next logical step, once a comp plan amendment is approved, is to change the zoning to match that amendment, and Jane can speak to this, that the comprehensive plan, which they have been approved for five hundred and eighty units, is the legally binding document in the state of Florida and the, the zoning code is required to match the comprehensive plan, so by having the five hundred and eighty units approved of the comprehensive plan, they are vested for that amount of development and this is the next logical step, so those two documents legally met, uh, mixed together in, in our. And with regards to the landscape buffer, uh, the landscape buffer was approved by the Board of Adjustment, that does not have anything to do with the comprehensive plan, that is a, a process through the Board of Adjustment that encompasses a public hearing, that hearing was, uh, was held and the Board of Adjustment ruled in favor of granting that, um, that, that variance, uh, and the Board of Adjustment is a decision, a final decision-making body, not a recommending body, so that was the final decision and there was no appeal to use that decision as part of people.
Commissioner Rosado, you have something?
Hey, Ben, I just got a quick question, the five eighty in the comp plan, what happens, it's, it's, it's a two-stage project, correct? What happens if two ninety are built and something happens and they don't build, they have the two ninety, is that a possibility?
Well, that's certainly a possibility, they are, they are entitled to be able to build those two hundred and ninety on the, on the second phase, actually, just for clarification, what they're asking for tonight is two hundred and eighty-two in the first phase, it's not a two ninety, two ninety split, it's two hundred and eighty-two in the first phase, and if that is built, they would be entitled to two hundred and ninety-eight dwelling units on the other phase, if they don't build them, they could certainly sell to another developer that could build them, they could petition to have that land use changed to build something else, at which time we would go through a land use amendment and review to make sure that there was adequate, uh, infrastructure and adequate, uh, utilities to service that property, but they, um, as part of their property rights, would be entitled to the full five hundred and eighty until such time as a change was proposed and granted.
So if, if they don't amend, if they don't abide by the five hundred and eighty comp plan, what, what does that mean? And that was a comp plan consisting of five hundred and eighty units, correct?
That is the maximum they can build on that property, they, they are entitled, they are entitled to be able to build up to.
Up to five.
Five hundred and eighty, they do not have to, they can, as the property owners, they do not have to maximize that development, but they are entitled to be able to build five hundred and eighty units.
I wish them the best and, uh, I'd hate to see two ninety build, two eighty-two and then something happened in the process, so I wish you guys best of luck.
Second, your time.
A, as a resident that will be adjacent to this new proposed project, I, I want to be clear, one, I, I don't have any illusion or I'm not so naive to think that the project won't be built, I, we know that the project's going to be built and a, a nice project that's built well, uh, would be a benefit to the community, but what little bit of information I've been able to gather so far, it feels like there's decisions that are being made that are going to benefit the developer and not so much to benefit the adjacent property owners or the community, for instance, I understand that the, the drainage ditch around is going to be filled in and then a twenty-five, apparently there was a variance to allow for a code-required twenty-five foot buffer to be reduced now to a ten-foot landscape buffer, so this would in essence limit the, you know, the size of the buffer, which a buffer is for creating some screening and some space between two adjacent properties, um, we all know about, I was at last top of the meeting and about the, the parking and how there was a variance granted for the reduction of the parking, and now we've, I, we've just done something where we've upped the number of three-bedroom apartments and they upped the number of two-bedroom apartments, so that's means more people, a, as far as I can tell, I'm asking that you as part of the commission and city staff to please consider those residents who are going to be directly affected by this project, it will be me and my fellow residents of Coral Gate that will be at the front door of this project and a buffer of landscaping, I, it was stated that this all, this whole ordinance had something to do with the comp plan, redistributing, redistributing the landscape buffer, I don't see how that has anything to do with the comp plan and I thought maybe you guys felt like you had to move that forward because of it, I'm asking you if you could please assist the residents of Coral Gate in letting this become the best project possible, it sounds to me like decisions are being made that benefit the developer and do not benefit residents of Margate or Coral Gate and actually put me to our detriment, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Um, Jane?
I just wanted to let you know that the problem is, once the variance for buffer, therefore a buffer, the variance for parking have been granted, uh, if someone, either the administration or an interested party, uh, does not appeal within thirty days, the decision of the Board of Adjustment is final, uh, this commission has, has no way, uh, to affect that variance, if in fact you had attempted to do that, you would once again be affecting the vested rights of the developer, uh, once again, if, uh, someone had discussed this when this was passed as a comp plan amendment, uh, there would have been a way, uh, perhaps to discuss the, the mix of units, uh, but this is a PUD and the whole idea is to have it on an individual, individualized basis as far as the number of, uh, units that are allowed, so going from, uh, what had been four hundred and twelve, uh, to, uh, yeah, with, I'm sorry, what was the, the former unit, uh, not, four twelve, so now it's going to be five eighty? Yeah, that was decided when this commission, uh, amended the comp plan to do it.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Rosado.
First I want to say thank you for coming up and being concerned about your neighborhood, second, um, correct me if I'm wrong, we were told that there was nothing, there's no landscaping planned even submitted as of yet, is that correct? Were we talking about last meeting, the, the entrance way and how that was going to have to come before us with the landscaping and all that permitting?
That is for the entrance way, Commissioner, what, what I stated was that the final site plans have not been signed off yet, the process for a site plan approval does not come before the planning and zoning board or the city commission, that is done by a development review committee, uh, the committee met and reviewed the preliminary plans and gave the, the development team, um, comments in order to make revisions, those final plans have been resubmitted, but have not been signed off yet, they're in the review process, during that development review process, uh, and the comments that were presented to the developer that time, the developer then petitioned for a variance and received that approval by the Board of Adjustments, so is it, is, there are different tracks depending on which approval, uh, is going through for a project, this is for a rezoning, uh, approval and the comprehensive plan approval comes to the city commission, but the design component of it through the site plan is, is done at the development review committee level.
All right, I know there's been talks to the developer about, you know, working with the community, I hope you just, you know, everybody's on the same page, you know, everybody, it works out for the best for everybody.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager, Assistant City Manager Joseph Cavano, I only have one question, and the reason why, well, first of all, Joe Varsova, and I don't live in the city anymore, I'm at eighty-eight eighty-eight Northwest Third Court Coral Springs, this does not mean that I'm going to remain there because when I find a so-called little residence for the wife and I, because we're saying what my daughter, I may come back to Margate, so basically I'm concerned about what's happening in Margate because basically I'd like to look at the future also, this whole situation, when someone says it doesn't benefit anyone, this situation that we're discussing right now, as far as the island, the island floor definitely benefits the residents of Margate because what it's going to do is going to allow for the additional revenue, which the city so drastically needs in order to keep consistent with its upgrading, no question about it, it will also benefit the surrounding communities that whereby, if there are additional things that might be needed, that the city would be financially responsible for, the funds would be available, one thing I would like you to consider, and I don't know with the city attorney whether or not this is at all possible, but many times I've spoken about the fact that many of the homes that we find in Margate, uh, they seem to be inundated with large families and yet there's only parking spaces for one driver when there's two drivers in the, in the, uh, the family or the apartment or the home, uh, also the number of bedrooms. or the apartment or the home. Also the number of bedrooms when there's a boy and a girl so far as children are concerned, a mother and father, which require three bedrooms. I'm just wondering whether or not there are any restrictions going to be placed on the number of people that could move, move into each one of these apartments. One-room bedroom apartment, two-bedroom apartment, three-bedroom apartment. Because we've had, and sometimes Jean wipes his forehead, because we've had a lot of problems with an abundance of people living in apartments. And if anything can be done, great. If it's controllable, great. And I'll look forward to your positive concern in reference to favoring this project. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, again.
City Attorney. City Attorney.
I'm sorry. Yes, we do have a restriction. There has to be certain square footage for each person. So many, but we cannot restrict a cap on the apartments as long as they meet the minimum restriction. Unfortunately, we've been down that road. There's a federal issue regarding that as far as providing restriction based upon headcount. And I'm positive that each one of these meets the minimum provided for in our code. And as far as the parking, we just discussed that, that the variance had been granted. It hadn't been appealed. That parking is now in place. And they now have a vested right to that variance. Thank you. But, but we are looking overall at parking. We are doing that overall as far as the city general regulations regarding residential parking.
Richard, that is 3043 Northwest 72nd Avenue. I come to speak to you as somebody with a lot of experience with FEMA and working on FEMA maps, LOMAs, you know, getting, going and getting my, my own explosion from the flood zone when the city was, you know, working on one for all of us. It didn't come through. I ended up in a terrible place because of that. I got my own. But I would say that in most of this through... Can I have my time back? No.
Yeah.
Thank you. So anyway, I know that most of, most of the review of my property, which I'm on, I'm on the Carolina Golf Course with a lake, had to do with the elevation of my property and how, how much I was not only above the, the normal grade, but that I had this, this huge lake there where all this rainwater pours into it. It pours off the golf course, you know, every time it rains. So I, I would like to, I would, I would offer, well, two different things. But I would offer that, that this ditch that they're talking about filling in is probably not a ditch. I mean, it's there to catch the rainwater. And I'm wondering, where's it going to go? Because it is going to affect their elevation. And did they have FEMA, has the builder had FEMA review the impact on all these homeowners when you fill in this ditch? That would be the first thing. And the other thing is, is I wonder how, how those homeowners might have been... If, if you could consider them properly noticed, if there were simply a sign on the, on the 441 side of, of the property when actually they all use Bank Road to go in and out of there. I see one concerned citizen here, but I know there must be, you know, probably 200 others that their insurance rates are going to go up whenever they find that, that ditch gets filled in.
Anybody want to address the ditch?
Yeah, the ditch was part of the variance.
No, just to try, wait, wait, this is silly.
The drainage ditch in question is substandard according to software water management drainage requirements. And in order to properly drain the project, the ditch will be filled in and a larger retention lake will be put on each face. It will, it will actually have excessive drainage compared to what is on there. It will, it will be able to handle the water. The calculations have been done. Our city engineering staff has looked at the calculations and there will be more water retention on site. And it meets the, the standards, whereas the current ditch does not meet standards.
Scott, you're on your 494th, Winfield Boulevard.
Hold on a second. Excuse me, Richard.
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead. Come on. I didn't want you to be interrupted by somebody else talking.
All right. Shall I repeat my address again? Good. Attorney Steinfield, Steinfield communicated to us that the variances that have passed now cannot be undone. And that makes alerts me to, if variances are so hard to turn over, why would we so gladly give them? I mean, the whole ideal of variance is that it, it deviation of a standard, a standard is given because it is generally what works. So if we are obligated to our word in changing off the standard, then we should a little bit, a little less readily make those variances exist. But it seems that it only benefits a for-profit business in the long run. And that's it.
Variants as residents come in and ask for variance, more times probably than developers or other property owners.
Yeah, Rich Popovich, 606-6 Winfield Boulevard. Like I said, this project doesn't sound like a bad idea. A quite overcrowded area. I, I live on Winfield Boulevard, so I, I, I know all them people that come scooting out here about eight or nine o'clock in the morning to drop their kids off and go to work. It's going to make a real zoo out of 441. And, but, you know, that's the way life is, I guess, when it comes to the development. What I'd like to say is, though, in law honesty to the developer and, and in reality, the last developer, United Homes, was total dog meat and a piece of crap as far as I'm concerned. They funded $6,000 to each city commissioner during election time. And we have elections coming up. And I hope that you can consider and refrain we're giving these people any campaign money because it looks terrible when they're sitting up there voting and now they come back and ask you for money. Thank you.
Okay, on that note, the buffer, I think, was discussed with, with, with your condo association last week and, or last meeting and everything else like that. When I drive down the road behind Coral Gate and between here, I'm looking at, there's a buffer of that road as well as the buffer that they're going to put in on the other side of the fence. I'm not one to tell people what to do on their property. It never happened and probably will never be. But it, it seems to me that between the road and the type of buffer, they're not moving the houses or the apartments any closer to the buffer. You're still going to have a, a buffer of landscape and then another road between the landscape and the apartments, correct? Just nod if I'm right, okay? I'll get my $6,000 check some other time. So anyway, it seems to me that they, that they've done their due diligence with talking with, with the condos. They're trying to work it out. And I'm sorry, there's going to be people that aren't going to be happy. I think y'all are going to end up as great neighbors in the long run. I think that's going to work out. So, Calhoun.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosanna.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Six grand. Uh, meaning inter.